To order, we're waiting on Mr. Shat- Dr. Chassot. And he should be here momentarily. All right. Go ahead and call this meeting to order and like to ask fellow board members if any of you have items to add to tonight's agenda. All right. Hearing none. Item 2.1, Finance. Review of Budget Recap and Timeline. Mr. Guidry.
With regards to our timeline, this is our first meeting, which we'll be reviewing the Group Insurance Fund as well as providing you all with a general overview of our proposed General Fund budget. We'll return or we're scheduled to return on May 10th to continue our discussion as needed, followed by a meeting on May 15th where we'll bring all of the funds back to the Board and ask for permission to proceed with the budget process. Assuming that permission is granted, we would move forward with budget finalization and budget adoption, which would include public advertisement on the 23rd and 24th of May, followed by a public inspection period of May 23rd through June 13th, and ending with a public hearing at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, June 13th. And the public hearing would be followed by a special board meeting at 4:30 where we would ask the Board to adopt the budget. And that is our current timeline.
Any questions or comments about the timeline? Item 2.2, Group Insurance Fund, Proposed Budget. Mr. Guidry.
With regards to our self-insured group health plan, the proposed 18-19 budget basically reflects what we're projecting our current year to finish at, with no increases of any significant nature. With regards to revenues, we're anticipating finishing this year at about 54.9 million of premiums. That's what we're proposing in the budget for next year. Medical claims, we're projecting at 29.3 million. Prescription claims, 17.9 million, basically $18 million. We haven't reflected an increase in the proposed budget for 18-19, given the changes that have been made to the group health plan that were effective in January. We're hoping that those changes will basically keep our claims in check. But nonetheless, we monitor this on a monthly basis, and if we see the need for revision or further discussion, we would bring it up immediately. With that said, beyond the revenue figures discussed and the two main expenditure or more material expenditure amounts, the other expenses are those that we would typically see from year to year. So at this point, I would ask if there are any questions from board members.
All right. Sir? Yes. As customary, are there any questions from anyone here in the public regarding item 2.2, Group Insurance Fund, Proposed Budget? Thank you. 2.3, Preliminary Report, 2018-19 General Fund Budget Summary, Projected Revenues and Expenditures. Mr. Guidry.
Yes. What I'd like to do is briefly review each of the six sections that are included in the General Fund Budget Summary. And as I go through each section, I'd ask if there are any questions that the Board, feel free to ask them as we move forward. And I'm thinking at the end of each section, we could open it up for questions from the audience as well. The first section of the General Fund Budget Summary is that of retained earnings, or fund balance, rather, I'm sorry. And one of the things I'd like for you to note is if you look at the first column, which includes row references, more specifically, Row Reference 10, and we'll open it up in a minute so everyone can see it, so I'll hold off for a second when you get to the attachment. Okay. So you'll note that Row 10 includes an adjustment to fund balance of right at a little less than $20 million, $19,990,642. This adjustment reflects board action taken at the December 13th, 2017 board meeting where the committed fund balance was changed from three months to two and a half months. And then any amount over and above that two and a half months is going to be transferred or scheduled to be transferred to self-funded construction fund account. So I just wanted to make mention of that. You can see basically where we started the year with regards to retained earnings, that's fund balance, our beginning fund balance as adjusted for this transfer. One of the things I wanted to bring to the Board's attention is this calculation is based on the third quarter budget for the General Fund. So what's going to end up happening is when we present the final budget revision for the General Fund, this number will be adjusted to reflect or to be based on two and a half months of total expenditures per the final budget revision, total expenditures plus transfers to debt service fund. But it should, we're expecting it to be no more than the 19.9 million reflected here. So with that said, I would ask if there's any questions in Section 1, Fund Balance.
Any questions from the public?
The second section of the General Fund Budget Summary is the revenue section. It's broken, it's detailed into three categories, local, state, and federal revenues. We'll go ahead and scroll to that section. We'll start with the local. With regards to our budget assumptions, we've presented to the Board on two occasions the revenue section of our proposed budget to make sure or to keep the Board informed of the direction we're heading in, and more specifically, the budget assumptions that we're using in preparing the budget. So under local revenues, our two main categories, the first being sales tax, the budget assumption used there is a 1% decrease from the collections that we're projecting for this fiscal year. We're reflecting a 1% decrease in collections for sales tax revenues. For property tax revenues, we're budgeting flat, meaning no increase. We're budgeting the same amount that we're anticipating on collecting in the current year, fiscal year 18. Based on our tax assessor's comments, we went with that budget assumption. We are, for interest income, proposing a $400,000 increase to that particular line item, and that's reflective of the fact that our interest rate has gone, has increased over the past couple of months. We're actually have exceeded the 1% mark on our interest earnings. So we have an adjustment proposed here to reflect that increase in interest income. We'll move forward to the state revenue section. And the main line item here is our MFP, our Minimum Foundation Program revenues. You'll note a slight increase from the current year. Basically, in reading the schedule, you would have to net the 18-19 baseline adjustment of $3 million reduction and the $1,693 increase to net the two in arriving at the projected increase for next year over and above current year. And that amounts based on Bessie's budget letter that they distributed in March. We received that number after we had prepared our initial projection. Our initial projection was based on a sales tax rate from fiscal year 18. The calculation is such that the formula takes our sales tax base and multiplies it times the average sales tax rate across the state. And so in estimating initially, we used fiscal year 18's rate, .76 cents. And for fiscal year 19, in the formula, it's actually .72. And that reduction resulted in a favorable result from a calculation standpoint, and is reflected in that increase in our MFP revenues, approximately 1.3 million. We'll move on to the federal revenue section.
Billy. Quick question. What's PIPS?
PIPS is an incentive that was given for additional training. Goes back maybe a couple of decades. Buddy Romer's administration, where given certain professional development, entitled individuals to these incremental payments.
Oh, so it's payments toward individuals or it's for professionals?
Yes.
Okay.
For individuals, and as those individuals retire, that number reduces. So at some point, it was zero out.
Okay. And second question, non-public textbooks?
Yes. That's funding for our parochial and private schools. They receive their textbook funding through Lafayette Parish School System, and they place their orders through, we receive the funds and they place their orders, and we process it on their behalf.
How many schools, you happen to know? And y'all can proceed.
Not right offhand, but, yeah, not right offhand. We'll come back to it if we're able to locate it. About 18 schools. Any other questions on state revenues before we move on to federal? Okay. In the federal section, the line item, federal revenue FEMA, is being zeroed out. You'll notice the adjustment to zero it out, $1.7 million. And that's because this is a reimbursement for expenditures made in fiscal year 17. So, I'm sorry, yes. And so it's a one-time reimbursement, and so we're removing it for fiscal year 19. The other adjustment in the federal section is indirect costs. You'll notice a 75, a recommended $75,000 increase in administrative adjustments column, and that's reflective of our application for the redesign grant. The redesign grant does offer indirect costs, which is basically reimbursement for our administrative costs that we can't charge directly to the grant, but they allow us an indirect rate where it doesn't fully reimburse us for our costs, but it's a nice offset. And that summarizes the revenue section with the total proposed budget of $279,729,734.
Any questions from the public? Board members? 2.4, General Fund Cost Centers, Proposed Budget for the 1100 Series. Mr. Guidry?
I'm sorry. Oh, if we, we're still going through the amounts to be allocated, right?
Oh, yeah. Let's not get too far ahead of ourselves, huh?
That is the next area.
It'd be nice if we could move on.
Okay. So what I'd like to do with the next section, with third section, which those expenditures that, I say expenditures, those line items, be it increases or decreases, that are allocations to cost centers and to schools that aren't included in the cost centers themselves. Cost centers will follow this section, Section 4. The reason they're not included there, basically two reasons. When we're going through the budget process, cost center requests, there is a cutoff for ALIO, where after that certain date, we don't allow any more inputting into our ALIO so that we can start finalizing reports and start preparing for this meeting. So at that point, any request, be it an increase or a decrease for cost center, is run through this section, Section 3. The other line items are proposed amounts that affect our school district or our schools. So we wait to allocate them to all the schools until the Board has time to consider them and indicate which they're in favor of. And once the budget's adopted, we go ahead and allocate these to all of the schools pursuant to the Board's adopted budget. So with that said, I'm going to go through each line item, and I would ask board members if there are any questions to go ahead and stop me at that point in time, otherwise I'll just continue.
And I'll also suggest that if anyone in the public has questions, come up as those items are called, so we can follow through the same process with the Board and the public. Mr. Guidry?
Okay. We have it up? Yes. The first line item is staffing appeals and enrollment increases. It's, the proposed amount is $1,206,000. What that represents is the equivalent of eight teaching slots. The point I'd like to make here are two. Number one, this would basically allow us to start the school year and make any adjustments administratively that enrollment might dictate without having to wait for, of course, a board meeting. Secondly, the appeals as presented, and if approved, are such that it's the equivalent of 18 teaching slots, but it can be used for any school personnel. So if there's a need for an additional assistant principal at a particular school, or counselor, or para educator, it would come from this line item. The next line item adjusts to current student teacher ratios for regular education. You'll notice an increase of $1,005,000.
Mr. Guidry, I'd just like to make a comment, not a question. So what this $1 million is an increasing cost essentially means that we're putting more teachers in the classrooms by doing away with the plus two and plus one formula for when a school gets an additional teacher or an additional section of a certain grade. So in the past, if you had 46 kindergartners and you had two classes, then you had to wait until you got your 49th kindergartner, I believe, before you got an additional section. Now, when you get your 47th, you get an additional section. So there's some additional costs, but what it functionally means is that there will be fewer students in classrooms, and we won't experience any of the problems where maybe you're buttoning up on 28, 29 kids in a second grade classroom before they get an additional teacher. So just wanted to point that out.
Next line item, Row Reference 39, adjusts to current student, I'm sorry, Row Number 40, adjusts to current student teacher ratio with special ed. You'll notice a decrease of $567,000. Again, this is reflective of the current student teacher ratios. That population, just the regulated population, will change before the start of school, and that's what the staffing appeals and enrollment increase line item will help us deal with as that number becomes a more finite number or definitive number. Any questions at this point before we move forward? The next several line items, you'll notice have no amounts associated with it, Rows 41 through 45. That was just to indicate to the Board that we took a look at those particular staffing ratios and noted that no adjustments were required. That brings us to Row Item 46, Step Increase, $1.5 million. The point I'd like to make here is this amount does not include the pay-for-performance stipend. It includes only the step increase for fiscal year 19. Next line item is a human resource analyst. That's one position. We would look to this person to assist with recruiting, assist with automation of our insurance benefits, as well as implementation of Position Control Module. One of the things that we're in the process of doing is implementing our Position Control Module. That module basically assigns a license to every physician. And so as we staff, the reporting indicates to us whether or not we have vacancies. So if we get a call from a particular school, we can reference that particular school to see if they have any vacancies to be filled. So it's not quite as automated as we'd like for it to be. There's still some manual pieces to it, but we're, we've put in our request to Wydenhammer for the automation piece, but we don't want to wait until that happens because it's such a large part of our budget. So with regards to Position Control, we're looking forward to the positive impact it'll have in that area. And this person would assist with that. Next line item, 48, reconcile to Position Control. That's basically what we did here was, as part of this implementation process, we compared the employees' and payroll to the employees that had been set up in Position Control and reconciled the two. And with regards to, and it resulted in our removing from Position Control, which basically is the module that budgets the salary and benefits portion in ALIO. So we reconciled it. It was a $505,000 decrease to get it to the employees that were actually on payroll. And this is basically due to, for the most part, we have positions that, such for electives that are, it's not necessarily student teacher ratio as much as the number of students who are taking that elective. And that's typically, we adjust, we budget at where we are the current year, and when the numbers actually come in, we adjust it upward or downward. So areas such as French, PE, band, ESL, another area, where we're making adjustments a little after, we're further along in the budget process. And so this basically recognizes those positions that were in the budget that there was no need for. Next line item, Row 49, is increase in ECA tuition. A tuition increase is not a rate increase, it's a participation or student increase. We had slots that are now, that were vacant, that are now filled, and as a result of it, our increase, our tuition is increasing to reflect those additional students. The rate remains the same. The next two line items are related. Those are Row Numbers 50 and 51. You'll notice a decrease of $1,608,000, followed by an increase of $1,608,000. What this is, what we're proposing here is the following. Every year, when we're closing the year out, we have retirements, and what we've been doing annually is upon those retirements or whenever someone exits, that was, whose salary was being paid 100% by the 2002 sales tax, when we go to replace them, we move those individuals to the General Fund. And that was sort of an agreement that was previously made whereby, because we were funding pay increases, a couple of pay increases through the 2002 sales tax, the understanding was as these individuals retired or exited the school district, we would move the funding to the General Fund. And that's worked out fine for the past several years because that number has been anywhere from three to five people. Next year, it's, we're anticipating a neighborhood of 24 people that this would apply to. And the main reason for such a large increase is when the fund was first established and lower class size, the teachers were identified back then, back in 2002, 2003, that timeline. We had a group of teachers who had the same number of years of experience. And so basically 16, 17 years later, they're all are scheduled to, well, will be retiring next school year. To be absorbed all at one time by the General Fund would be burdensome. We would, we're proposing that we bring them into the General Fund, but over the next few years, as our sales taxes hopefully recover. As mentioned earlier, we've budgeted a 1% decrease. We're hoping that, that in essence is a slowdown of what we've experienced previously, and we're hoping in future years that we'll reach the break even and even increase, seeing slight increase in those collections. So wanted to bring that to the Board's attention.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
A few questions on that item. When a teacher retires in that position and then it moves over to the General Fund because you've hired someone else to fill that position, I'm going to assume that you've hired someone to fill the same position to perform the same duties that the teacher who retired was filling, correct?
I would say more times than not, yes.
Okay. Who, you mentioned an agreement. Who had an agreement that through attrition, these positions would go into the General Fund?
I would say there was a discussion during a board meeting, whether or not there was an actual motion made. I'd have to go back and research, and we can do that. But there was definitely a discussion, one might say, an understanding, maybe not an official motion whereby, you know, that we would handle it in that manner in view of the fact that the $1,000 increases that had been placed in the teacher's salary schedule was going to be funded through the 2002 tax.
Exactly. Let me ask you, you mentioned an average of four teachers a year. I guess that's an average. Over the years, are you saying that that, first of all, are you saying that that's an average so that we can go back and determine about how many teachers have been removed, salaries have been removed from that fund and put into the General Fund since about 2003?
Yes. We started out with a little over 120 positions, 122, 123, and we're down to about 58. So we've moved more than, more than half of those positions back into the General Fund.
Yeah, I find that to be problematic, and so I don't disagree with what you're doing here, but I think we need to find a way to keep those positions here and not trickle them back into the General Fund. It was done purposefully for a reason at the time, and so that's just my suggestion. So what you're doing here is great, but you mentioned finding a way to ooze them back in. Yes. Tonight it is. Tonight it is. So that's, that's my suggestion.
The next line item is the removal of six French enrichment teachers at the fourth grade level for estimated savings of $402,000, followed by a reduction in NWEA and moving a fast forward to Title I, estimated savings of $140,000.
Mr. Guidry, what is the total cost to the general fund of NWEA and fast forward?
NWEA, Annette Missamick may be able to comment on that, maybe in the 150?
It's about $385,000. It comes out of different cost centers. For example, it comes out of, some of it's IDEA, some of it is AG grant, and some of it is from the general fund.
So do we know how much of it is, of that, you said 385 total for NWEA, do we know how much of it is in the general fund?
In my cost center, it's 222,000, of which fast forward licenses and NWEA were a part of it. So.
And so we're reducing 222 by 140, or we're reducing 362 by 140?
We're reducing the general fund portion.
Well, right. She's, she said.
The 140.
So she said the general fund portion is 222,000. So my question is, is that, is that the result of the reduction or the number before the reduction? That was my question.
That would be the reduction amount.
Yes.
So it was 362, now it's 222.
Well, it was, it's not, it's a result of the funding source being moved more so than, than the reduction. Is that right, Ms. Samick? In other words, we're, we're moving the fast forward cost to grant funding.
Right. No, I understand that. I'm not asking where the 140 is going. I know where the 140 is going. I'm asking what is remaining in the general fund? And that's that number, $222,000.
Oh, okay.
That's what's in cost center 1454, yes.
So that's both of them, NWEA and fast forward? Do you have any ballpark number of what NWEA makes up of that 222,000?
And I don't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't have the specifics.
Thank you.
Next line item, 54, is elimination of Magnet Academy Coordinator, one position, $63,600 savings.
Ms. Guidry, I have a couple of questions right here, but you may not be able to answer them. I'm just confused about what we're being asked to eliminate. I wasn't familiar with this title, so I looked at the cost center. I think it was 1459 for Schools of Choice, and I didn't see anything with this title or with this salary amount, 63,000. And so I asked who's on to send me the job description, and she sent me the job description for the Marketing and Recruitment Coordinator. And the salary on the, for that cost center, for that position was more, was closer to 50,000 rather than 63. So I'm just confused. What are we being asked?
It's.
Do we, or do we have?
That is correct. It's my understanding that that would also then include the, the benefits.
The benefits. So are we, do we have a position called Magnet Academy Coordinator?
It's the Magnet Recruitment Coordinator position.
Okay. So that, the title.
It's not Magnet Academies because we never changed the job description when we changed from Schools of Choice.
So the title that's listed on this summary is not an actual title. The title we're being asked to eliminate is the Marketing and Recruitment Coordinator.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next, item number 55 is reduce bus intern slots of 10. This is a program that was put into place in the current year, and based on the results that we, we've experienced, we feel that it can be eliminated. And if there's a need to revisit it, we can, we can do so the next school year. Row 56, reduce regular ed bus attendance by seven, savings of $175,000. This is the result of the positive impact our installation of cameras has had on our school buses. These are, of course, regular ed aides, physicians that are currently vacant, that will be eliminated as a result of the, having the cameras and the assistance that those cameras provide. Next, next line item, elimination of bus driver attendance and set in program, $112,400. That was another pilot program in the current fiscal year that we're proposing to, to eliminate. Additional school resource offices, increase of $500,000. This is line item, row 58 and 59, these two are related to our safety initiative. The board just recently approved a safety, safety assessment, confirms to come in and survey our schools. And in part of that process, while we're doing that, we're taking a look at increasing the number of school resource offices within our school district. This would equate roughly to about 10 additional officers. It's not exactly 10, depending on which, which contract you look at, the rates are a little different. But for discussion purposes, just to give the board an idea, it would be about 10 physicians, 10 officers. And then the next line item, salary, a safety initiative contingency of 700,000. As we move through that safety assessment, these funds have been, are being proposed to address the more critical items, the highest, those of highest priority that come out of the safety assessment. Line item 60, elementary science curriculum development, increase of 100,000. This relates to introduction of project-based instruction into our curriculum. Line item 61, increase school district's contingency account balance from 100,000 to 200,000. We have a contingency account for approximately, roughly a $280 million budget of $100,000. So basically, when something comes up that's unplanned for, we're proposing that we increase that to 200,000, just so that it, the day-to-day things, it gives us, it gives administration a little bit more flexibility and speeds up the, the reaction time or the decision-making time. So with regards to that, whenever those funds are used, they do require, there is an approval chain so that the superintendent is aware of how those funds are being spent. He's, he's actually authorizing the, the use of those funds if and when we do use them or there is a need to use them. Any questions through this point?
Yes. Yes, sir. Can somebody break me down the elementary science curriculum development? That's money set aside for us to develop a proper science curriculum?
I think it's going to be to enhance.
Dr. Chason, this request came from Dr. LeBlanc. She's a science content specialist. We actually do not have science textbooks, per se. We are developing our own rigorous science curricula. One of the things we need to do is infuse into elementary education, more project-based learning. This $100,000 will be awarded to potentially 20 teachers, each earning up to $5,000 for developing an appropriate project-based lesson or lessons to be delivered to the remaining teachers in the district.
Yeah, my question's a follow-up. It may already be answered. So I know that we have a science specialist, and she has her own department with her own budget. So the cost for developing this curriculum is not already included in the budget for that department?
No, ma'am. There's not, there's not adequate budget in, in those cost centers.
All right. And then my last question, and this is arising from what I've just learned about tier one, tier two, and tier three curriculum. Are we going to work on getting tier one, the highest quality curriculum for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What's the, what's the science cost center?
One of the things I would mention, Ms. Morris, is if, whenever we have an increase that we anticipate being a one-time increase, if it's basically the startup cost for a program, we, we include it in a cost center for one-time costs. And so once the budget year is over with, we zero out those line items. And any requests for increases for one-time costs start from zero. So when something like this is, is approved, we ask the question, is it recurring? And if it isn't, if it's startup, then we put it in that one-time cost center to ensure that it doesn't get rolled over into the following year's budget. So I just wanted to make mention of that.
Okay. Another question. What's the, what's the criteria for that science development? What's the criteria? Or who's, who's going to monitor the development of said curriculum for project-based to award the five grand? Like, so the individual science person is going to decide amongst whoever participates, that that person is going to be awarded the five grand?
Every time I get up here, I say something, it's really loud and scares everybody. So I'm Dr. Shawna LeBlanc, the science specialist. Is it on? Am I not?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm the science specialist. In regards to the 100,000, they will be monitored, yes, very closely. In fact, we'll have a rubric that will go out with criteria for not just the science teacher who's interested in receiving the grant, but also, and we're doing it by way of grants. So we're asking for groups of teachers across curriculum to come together to create a, essentially it's a STEM unit, but we're going to slowly but surely move them into that by allowing them the time to collaborate. And we will look at those proposed units and the ones that align most closely with our current standards. Then we will work with those teachers to make sure that the units are developed and that they are, upon developing, rigorous, right? They will align with our standards, they will incorporate the math standards that align to our science standards, also ELA. And we are hoping that we can get some teachers that are also in the arts and social studies to blend into those units as well.
Okay. So question. What about the teachers that don't get the five grand?
Well, that's a very good question. So all of the units that will be developed will be within our district, open resource. So all teachers will have access to them.
Okay. So access and being mandated are two different things?
Two different things, yes.
So open access, so some teachers at one third grade level may be teaching or working on projects that others aren't?
Yes. The, short of that is yes, absolutely. But the, the thing to remember, though, is that they must, the units that are being developed must align with the standards that we already have. So it, it seems nice that they would come up with units that are kind of wherever they, they want to go, right? But we want to rein them in and make sure that what they develop and through our guidance also adheres to the level of rigor and the, the content that they need to cover with the students. It's more of a, it's more of a, a way to pilot and get teachers who might be interested in more STEM-related or STEAM-related activities to start to develop a mindset of collaboration across the curriculum. So not just science, teaching science, but science and math teachers working together in collaboration and possibly co-teaching. And this is a, a great way to kind of get the teachers buy-in through the ownership of what they develop.
Mr. Guidry, sorry, sorry to back up, but just real quickly, number 58, additional school resource officers. This addresses the SROs, but I don't see a line item for SSOs. Is that anywhere coming up, or are we addressing that at all?
Currently, the budget as proposed includes the SSOs that are currently in place. So there is no proposed revision at this point to change anything along those lines. So any, any change that the board would like to make would require, well, would require change to what's being proposed because it's not currently, it's currently, our current SSOs in place would remain in place if this were adopted. Let's see. I'll get caught up here. All right. With regards to row 62, or item 62, utilities, HVAC, gymnasiums, that's sort of self-explanatory with the 18 gymnasiums that we've, will hopefully have completed in upcoming months. We would anticipate an, an increase in utilities for those gymnasiums. That estimate's $500,000. Reclassifications, these are basically pay grade changes for positions. We basically, for the past at least two years, have not included anything in the budget. And the requests that we reviewed, the reclassification committee is, is getting to be quite lengthy. So we're proposing $150,000 to allow us to address those that have been, I guess, deferred for, for at least a couple of years now. The next line item is increased library allocation to $10 per student in the per pupil allocation. Several years ago, there was a requirement that $7.50 of that per pupil allocation be used for library books. So over the years, some schools have continued along those lines, others have not. Roughly about half, or half or at that level or above, a little above, half or not. They chose to spend it in other areas that, that were worthwhile as well. We're looking at requiring that they expend the $10 or budget the $10 for library books. I believe the current cost to replace a library book for, one library, library book is $15. We're anticipating over the next couple of three years, increasing this allocation so that we can get it up to that amount. So that's what the additional $75,615 represents. Row reference 65, transportation for minor high school sports clubs and organizations, $105,000 increase. This is to provide some assistance for our sports that are, that are not large revenue generators, which would require the participants to do a lot of fundraising, you know, some of the, some of the smaller or less, less attended sports. When they travel, it gets to be quite expensive. So basically, this line item would offer assistance for trips outside of basically the Acadiana area, roughly about $500 per, per trip to assist them so that there would not have to be as great of a need to, to fundraise. Any, anything you want to add, Mr. Craig?
No, we're just, we're looking at the minor sports. They, they generate very little revenue, and once you leave, once you head to Lake Charles, Alexandria, Baton Rouge, New Orleans, Shreveport, almost $800. So it's just a way to help them because they don't generate any revenue.
So this is allocated for the minor sports?
So, this is allocated for the minor sports?
Sports only, yes, sir.
And we actually have those outlined in our pay schedule?
Is this gonna open any door?
Mr. Hidalgo, it's listed as minor sports and clubs and organizations. What we're thinking is fifteen thousand dollars for each of the high schools. A maximum of five hundred dollars per any one trip would allow the school to offset partially the cost of transportation for forty trips outside of the Acadiana region. So, we're thinking, we're thinking Acadia, St. Landry, Iberia, Vermillion Parish. If you travel out of that area, you would be eligible to receive five hundred dollars for that trip in assistance.
Row reference number sixty-six, transportation, digital downloads for cameras. The camera installation on our buses, as I mentioned earlier, we've seen some positive results. Currently, our transportation personnel have to go out and retrieve the SD card from the cameras to download the videos. So, this particular increase would allow them to do so from here. So, a lot less time spent on the road and more time spent investigating and reviewing those videos and tending to other transportation issues. Row reference six-
Ms. Guidry, I guess I'm Mr. Craig. The videos, is it reviewed continuously, or if it's only when there's a question, or it's reviewed every day?
No, with three hundred buses and five cameras a bus, it's, we do, they do spot checks. If we get some call-ins or some complaints, but nothing specific, we'll pull cards just to kind of validate a concern. But typically, a bus driver will say, this happened this time, can you pull the card? Or a principal will say. And so, Mr. Evans and Mr. Simon basically run around picking up the cards now. And with this upgrade, that'd be the initial hardware and software package, but we could view videos from the office or from the schools without making the actual trip. There is a renewal fee in future years. If the board would go with this, I wanna say about ninety thousand dollars for the initial installation, and maybe forty-five thousand a year in terms of maintenance in the future. But in terms of the manpower of the two gentlemen driving around the parish, I think their time could be better spent working with personnel and parents.
Row reference sixty-seven, robotics program. This is a proposed increase of fifty thousand dollars to provide additional resources for that particular program. Dr. Aguilar, would you like to comment on this line item?
So, members of the board, we are in the process of converting the W.D. Smith Gymnasium in, back into robotics area for the programs we'll be offering in the fall. There's understandably, a lot of equipment that needs to be purchased to update and install a robotics program there. We have money in the capital projects budget that we're relying on. We're just asking you for an additional fifty thousand dollars to make sure that we have the state-of-the-art equipment so that we can attract kids to the career center. We believe this is going to be the finest venue available in the area, if not the state of Louisiana, in terms of ability to attract robotics teams to work and develop the expertise that we're delivering to these students.
Row reference sixty-eight, NP Moss STEAM or STEM staffing. I think the theme is going to be presented to the board in the very near future. A hundred fifty thousand dollars, basically, what that represents is bringing on three to four staff, your principal and assistant principal, like in mid-year, January, your counselor and secretary a little bit later, to prepare for the nineteen-twenty school year. Row reference sixty-nine, NP Moss STEAM.
Mr. Guidry, and this is gonna, this is in reference to both of these items, and I know Mr., Dr. Chasson has some comments on them as well. And so, whoever wants to explain. Both of these items seem to be very premature because nothing's even been presented to the board yet about not only this idea, but any other alternatives. And I'm not convinced yet, because no information's been persuaded, that we need another special academy, or that we need additional. I understand that STEM is a big growing area, as is art, but it seems to me, what we've talked about in the past, is that we need more elementary space because we have so many of our elementary students in Butler buildings. So, I think that there are other options and alternatives that hopefully will be presented so that we have more than one to choose from when the board is ready to approve or not approve, along with information about the different costs. Because, yeah, in an ideal financial world, I'm sure a STEAM academy would be fantastic, but I'm not sure that's where our parish is right now. So, this line item seems to be premature since we haven't even gotten to the presentation part, or community involvement part, or even feasibility studies on this versus some other type of program at this school. So, and I know, if you'll just hang on, I know Dr. Chasson has some comments as well on it.
So, members of the board, I mean, certainly, we recognize that it is, it is a little bit premature to say STEM or STEAM. We are working diligently to try to develop some ideas to bring to the board, perhaps as early as the May board meeting. We would like some direction from the board. It's likely no secret that the leading, most often-mentioned topic has been STEM-related. This Moss campus is going to provide seven hundred additional seats in a remodeled facility that we own completely. We are gonna move kids out of temporary buildings, largely elementary students, into the classrooms at the Moss campus. We're not quite sure what the theme will be. If you have any ideas, we would love to explore and examine and evaluate whether or not it matches the needs of the district. The school, as we envision it, will open in August of 2019. So, we believe we need to have the principal come onboard, much as we did with Southside High School, come onboard a little bit early, begin identifying the faculty. That's why we're asking for the money for the early staffing of the key personnel. We need furniture. We know we'll need furniture in that school. We're asking for two hundred thousand dollars. We're envisioning the school would open with K first, second, and third grade students and sixth grade students. The following year, we would add fourth and seventh grade to the campus, and then the third year, we would add fifth grade and eighth grade to the campus. Each of the grade levels, we envision, would have about three sections. The school would fill out at about a hundred, seven hundred students. We will bring to use some ideas in May, and we would love for the board to debate and discuss and determine how best to use those seven hundred seats.
So, this design, Moss, isn't actually gonna exist as Moss now? It'll be, it would be named something different, or?
We've had some conversations about naming. This is, where we are at this point in time, the alternative program will move to La Rosen.
Okay.
La Rosen has a state site code number. We have talked about the idea that it would become the La Rosen Preparatory School, i.e. the alternative school site for the district. In our early conversations, we wanna hold on and maintain NP Moss in the name for this facility on Mud Avenue. So, we're open to how we name these schools. We'll bring that back to you as well, presumably in May, for you to help us with that.
I just have a question, I guess, and a comment. One, with the NP Moss program, Dr. Aguilar, you and I have discussed this idea about getting or creating a program that removes the elementary students, the very young ones, from that environment with the much older students. And I know that you had looked into the Second Chances program, and it looked like everything was a go, but you were concerned about the cost of putting Butler Buildings at J. Wallace James. So, what was the cost, and how does that compare to the three hundred, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's being asked for now for a program that we don't even know is ever gonna happen yet?
First of all, I would hope that we would not leave idle a facility that can hold seven hundred students. We talked about moving Second Chance back to J. Wallace James. The requirements for that program entail needing at least four teachers, needing a, needing teacher assistants, needing a coordinator position, two buildings. At the time, we were looking at either a standstill budget or a budget shortfall based on early MFP projections. It just did not look financially like we would be able to expend that type of money. The Second Chance program serves just the youngest children in the alternative setting. So, we're talking about fewer than thirty students benefiting from the Second Chance program. Financially, it just did not look viable that we would spend the necessary money to begin that program. I have not moved away from the idea of doing something with those very early-aged children to get them back on track. I mentioned yesterday that if the board would like us to begin with a pilot of the Second Chance program at J. Wallace James, I would recommend we move one temporary building that would house two classes, and we would begin with two classes of Second Chance students at J. Wallace James. It would significantly reduce the burden to the district in terms of the staffing necessary to make those two classes viable. I just need direction from the board, and I'll, we'll be happy to engage in placing a temporary building on the J. Wallace James campus, moving the, let's call it, second and third grade alternative ed students to J. Wallace James, and offering that program to help those students. I think it would benefit them, but we have to be realistic that we're thinking about thirty potential students compared to the benefits of seven hundred students at the NP Moss campus.
All right. And then my second, I guess, question is, you said you're gonna be ready to bring to us, maybe in May, which is just a couple of weeks away, some ideas. I understand from rumors that I've been hearing, that a good bit amount of work has already been put into the STEAM idea, but what other actions have been taken to solicit other ideas, and what kind of work has been put into, already put into developing alternative ideas for this location?
Okay. I'm not aware of any work that's been done regarding STEAM. We've had several conversations, planning conversations, about the logistics of opening a new school. We have not determined a theme for this school. I said to, did we have a meeting yesterday or today? We had a meeting yesterday, and I told the staff, we welcome any input possible in terms of, let's come up with some additional ideas. Board members, if you have any as well, I'd love to hear what you're thinking. We wanna make sure we make the right decision. It is vitally important that we take this opportunity, because of the location of the school, we take this opportunity to build programs there that are widely successful, and we get parents to choose to send their children to this site, because I do not think this becomes a neighborhood school. This needs to be a school that helps more students be college and career-ready ultimately.
And just my very general suggestion is that we need to really look at a program that starts addressing our achievement gap with our students who live on the north side. So, I'm not sure if the STEAM is going for that, but I know there are programs in other parishes and facilities who address that specifically for that particular population. So, but I'm not the expert. Individuals out here are the experts. So, I hope that you or your staff will send emails out to the principals or administrators soliciting ideas, because obviously, we have a short timeline.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm not guaranteeing you that we will have a recommendation for you by May. We will make every effort to make this decision no later than June. And let's hope we make the right decision because of the opportunity that it presents to us.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm with Dawn. Before we do anything with that school, Doc, Moss Prep is in the transition zone. So, before we do anything with that school, we need to go ahead and focus on the zone, the transition zone that we're focused on.
Dr. Chasson, I believe the zone would, if we move the alternative school to La Rosen, I believe La Rosen Preparatory School, if that's the name chosen, would be part of the transformation zone. Irma, wouldn't you think so? We're thinking that that's the clientele that merits the need for the services, not necessarily the building.
The building, yeah, I can understand that. So, let me ask you a question. How much different is STEM than STEAM?
So, STEAM is just the letter A, the arts incorporated in the STEM component.
Okay. What's the waiting list for those STEM elementary schools?
It's, it's, they all have waiting list.
Yeah. J. Wallace James, we did not reopen for the second go-round because the waiting list was so long. L. Leo Judy's, the waitlist was short. We did reopen it in the second round. I can't tell you right now what the waitlist looks like.
Okay.
David Thibodeau is open for waitlist as well. The seats are filled, but we still allow students to apply for the waitlist, because some do withdraw their application.
Yeah. I don't think that the notion of Moss Hallway opened up the Health Academy at Northside and had very little interest in it when it came to Northside, that a STEM school at the old Moss Prep would elicit to folks the exact same thing that occurred with Northside. I was hoping for kids to come to Northside, to come to a great program, and I guess I could hope for kids to come to Moss Prep for a great program. But you don't think that parents will still choose J. Wallace James and the other many STEM elementary schools versus choosing Moss STEAM?
So, Dr. Chasson, I've said this to the staff several times now. We have built some outstanding programs, and they are mostly in a silo configuration in this district. Waitlist for kids to get to J. Wallace James. Remember, and I was in St. Mary Parish, more than likely, I was, actually, I was probably at Carncro. No one was sure if kids were going to go to J. Wallace James. L. Leo Judy's waitlist, David Thibodeau waitlist, LJ Alamon, difficult to get in. We have outstanding programs, but we're not servicing the larger group of students in the district. We have parents who will choose those programs, but they can't get in. They can't get a seat. We've got to do more for all of the students in the district. That's why we really have to learn from people all over the country who started, as we did, with schools of choice, with academy-themed schools, but they are moving toward a more holistic approach of challenging students on every campus to really think critically and behave differently, and be engaged in STEM and arts and other activities. I believe if we build this right, this will be another J. Wallace James, another L. Leo Judy's, another LJ Alamon, another David Thibodeau, that will attract students and parents who wanna send their children on a bus, more than likely, at a satellite stop, more than likely, to a school that offers outstanding education.
Just respectfully, Doc, actually, what I just heard was an increase in transportation costs. And I heard-
We have kids who ride satellite stops to David Thibodeau. We literally have bus transportation from all over the parish with kids going to Paul Bro.
Right. No, but what I heard was an increase in transportation costs because this school doesn't exist right now, and if La Rosen is still going to have that same transportation that Moss Prep has, then this school will then have transportation throughout the parish. And I would just tend to think that kids actually aren't choosing the program as we so hoped they would when it came to North Side. They're actually choosing the schools, they're not choosing the programs, which is clearly evident by North Side's Health Academy.
Mr. Broussard?
Dr. Agalod, I want to agree with you in trying to do the very best we can to educate every child we've got in the parish. I'm like Dr. Shasson. We are overlooking the program for the location of the school and the name of the school. I'm all on board in trying to sell this to the general public, which is going to be a rather difficult task to do so. If we got a solid plan in place, I don't know how we're going to, where we're going to pull the students from, what's going to be the selling card, what do we tell them? There's a waiting list at all these schools, but will the parents allow their babies to go to the NP Moss because J. Wallace James is full, L. Leo Judy's is full? You know, we went through that problem with North Side and the waiting list still at Lafayette High, and they did not choose to go to North Side for the same program. I'm not against it. I just hope that we take our time and carve it right to present it to the public. It is needed on this side of town in trying to persuade the public not to choose the program, not the location.
Mr. Lachey?
Dr. Shasson. J. Wallace opened 2003. I had a second grader at Ridge Elementary in the country, okay? Doing good, doing great. Sat down with my wife and thought long and hard. My son went to J. Wallace James. We put him in the Schools of Choice. The education he got there, I feel, was better than he would have gotten at Ridge, only for a reason. It was a newer school, it was a different concept. Strong mathematical teachers there. He just started two weeks ago at Baker Hughes and would be in engineering program because he has a degree in industrial technology. So to answer your question, with the right information and taking a chance, we sent our son, not across the parish, but almost across the parish, foreign education. And we did our research, okay? It was new, took a chance. I think parents, if you present this right, I don't see any reason it can't happen again. You know, that's just my personal, that's what we did. I mean, we took a child out of a country school, all his friends, and in third grade, sent him in his mind across the world, and it paid off, you know, for us now. That's just me relaying that, you know, asking if, you know, parents will do it. Yes, some parents will do it.
Ms. Morrison?
Carl, is there a waitlist for the Health Academy at Lafayette High?
Yes, but this year it is extremely small. I mean, we're talking single digits.
And those students are not interested in going to North Side? Is that what you're saying? Oh, they shut it down, okay.
Well, we did contact them before that decision was made and they were not interested. And the students that did make a commitment to North Side were not interested in going to Lafayette High.
Yes, ma'am. It was, I think it was, ended up being 12 eligible students.
Where are we at? Mr. Shasson?
Oh, go ahead. Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to zero out budget line items 68 and 69.
We have a motion by Dr. Shasson, a second by Ms. Morris, to zero out line item 68 and 69. Board member comment on the motion. Additional board member comment on the topic.
Dr. Shasson, you asked to zero that out to possibly bring it back later or to zero it out, you don't think is going to work, or zero it out because you don't have all the information that's needed?
Not necessarily all the information, just with $350,000, I think, as opposed to creating a STEAM school, that $350,000 can go to improving schools in District Four and within that transition zone that we've newly created. So I'm going to bring it back up the money, but I'm going to intend to use it for other purposes.
Ms. Morris?
And just a couple of comments because my ideas are flowing. One is, if it's not going to be a special type school, then it can be an ordinary elementary school. That can be done quickly and with not a whole lot of additional cost to change anything at the school. Second thing is, two of our French immersion programs are the schools that have the worst problems with Butler buildings. That's Prairie and Evangelion. So we could create a second full French immersion program and pull kids from Prairie and from Evangelion, empty out those Butler buildings, and put them into a brick and mortar school. Those parents, I keep hearing that it's the program and not the schools that they're interested in, so it really shouldn't matter what facility they're located at. And we know that's true because when Gifted was moved to Paul Bro, some people did fuss about the move, but the program's been very successful and people have made the trek to that side of town for that program. So those are two additional ideas that I don't think would cost a huge amount of money because they're already set up. It would just be more of a moving issue rather. The parents are already bringing the kids, are using satellite stops for the immersion. So we could have Myrtle, and then we have NP Moss, and they're on opposite sides somewhat, and we're taking care of those 60 Butler buildings at those two elementary schools.
Ms. Sammy?
I'd just like to make a recommendation that you leave the funding there for whether it's a traditional school, whether it's a different academy school, or whether we, for whatever, because if we're going to make it a school in 2019, 2020, the needs are still the same. We're going to need money to begin the furniture aspect, we're going to need the money to begin the staffing aspect of hiring a principal, hiring instructional leader, and eventually the counselor. Those are half-year salaries. So we weren't looking at adding staff until the spring, after January, so that, again, whatever school we make it for 2019, 2020, we need the money.
No, just to respond to that, Ms. Sammy, I do understand that, but as opposed to a school that doesn't exist right now, I'm thinking about the transition zone and Karen Crow High and Lafayette Middle and North Side and Alice Boucher and JW Faulk, and there are things that I've just recently, as of today, walked into Billy's office at the last minute and said, man, I really think we need a true entry officer just for this area, because if the kids aren't coming to school, then obviously they can't learn, and various other positions that I'd like to see get funded, funded, so we can give a true, hard, all-in effort for those schools, because I think we got the right people in place. We just need to be sure that we're not, we're not giving them the Ford Focus version. I want the Cadillac version, if anybody can remember that.
Any additional comments? I'd like to call for the vote. Votes up? If we can move on, starting with line item number 70? Oh, let's not move too fast. Dr. Shasson?
I'd like to make a motion to zero out line number 60.
We have a motion by Dr. Shasson, a second by Ms. Morris, to zero out line item number 60, Elementary Science Curriculum Development. Discussion from the public. Britt Better hurry, he'll be absent in a minute. Board member comments on this item? Mr. Santani?
I'm going to speak very, very slowly to give Ms. Lachey a little more time to return so that he can vote on this particular motion from Dr. Shasson on whether to reduce the funding for elementary. I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
I don't mind waiting for...
And I have a comment, too. So I'm not necessarily opposed to the idea behind this. It just seems to me that it needs a little bit more development and refinement. And I got a message during the meeting to ask Dr. LeBlanc, I mean, you have science coaches, right? So why are the science coaches not developing this curriculum already? I mean, within their budget already? So there are just a lot of questions, I guess, before I'm ready to move this $100,000 into something that seems a bit vague.
The idea behind this is to have the participation and build capacity within the teachers that we have within our district. We have teachers in pockets that are excellent and are really doing well with the standards and the implementation, but we also have a lot of teachers who are interested but need to know how to implement these specific strategies and more holistic teaching to develop all of our students. And the idea is to have teachers who are interested, bring them to the table, and build their capacity within. So essentially, we're building leaders within the schools themselves. The coaches are very busy. They go out, they work with teachers all the time. However, for them to develop curriculum as just a single entity is not, I would advise against it, because what we have currently, we have teams of curriculum teachers that we've worked with, especially Elementary. Elementary did an amazing job and they are wonderful people. They came to the table, they showed up every time, and they have developed what we have now. And throughout the summer, we will be working on aligning those units with math and ELA, which is something that we kind of had to ease into. We have an opportunity to look at teachers and to help them so that they don't feel like they're in isolation. So when we look at what a teacher is doing within the classroom, we make sure to build those positives and to help them where they may be struggling. And the best professional development is for you to write a unit, because it's constant reconsidering of what, really reflection of what you've done, what that will look like in the classroom with the students. And not only that, but every teacher has a different set of students who have unique needs. And we never want to stray away from being able to meet the needs of all students, because we do believe that all students can achieve, can learn, and can be successful, and as they leave our system, be college and career ready.
So Ms. LeBlanc, here's my, here's my issues with Dr. LeBlanc. My apologies. My apologies. Someone made mention once that I take offense if somebody forgets to call me doctor, which is never the case. So I do apologize. We have students, we have teachers, we have coaches. Did I miss something? Okay, we have students, teachers, coaches, and then your position, the science specialist?
Correct.
Okay. Who am I missing in that hierarchy? Strategists?
That work at the schools.
Okay, so it's students, teachers, strategists? Strategists?
They're instructional leaders.
Somebody help me with the hierarchy here. Students, teachers, then who? Instructional leaders?
Instructional leaders.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Instructional leaders, and then...
Principals. Who are your instructional leaders as well?
Then principals. And then who's, besides the principals, where do the strategists and the coaches and the academic specialists fit that?
Your strategists are your instructional leaders. Their title was changed, so there is no strategist any longer.
Gotcha. So then, students, teachers, instructional leaders, principals, then, science-wise, that would be the coaches next?
The coaches work with the instructional leaders, yes, and the teachers as well.
And then the science specialist is technically over the science coaches?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So my mind frame of thinking here, y'all, is... Trying to figure out the easiest way to say it. I don't want the teachers to do the coaches' job, and that's what I kind of feel like this is. If somebody's going to develop a curriculum, I don't want it to be the teachers. I want it to be those coaches or the instructional leaders and the science specialists, as opposed to, hey, here's 100 grand. Come up with something good. That's a lot of money. So somebody help me out with that, if somebody would like to rebut that statement.
So I will. This is professional development. It's an opportunity for teachers to collaborate with their peers, cross-curriculum, to talk about how we can engage students at a higher level. If it's always just presented to you, you don't always invest in what someone is giving to you. So this is the opportunity, it's like a grant. There'll be $25,000 grants out there for teacher teams to develop a lesson. It will be evaluated with a rubric, it will be scored, and the top 20 teams will then receive the $5,000 to now launch it, to implement it during the school year. And this would be an opportunity, as Dr. LeBlanc said, it becomes an open source. We share it with everyone in the district so that everyone benefits from the development that the teachers have done.
And just as a sidebar to that, we always, when we sit down with, when I sit down with my coaches and we decide what are we going to do, what are the needs of our teachers, we want to live by the model that the teachers live by. And those new science standards are all about doing. You learn by doing. And this is the, I can, by the next board meeting, have testimony after testimony after testimony for you from those teachers that we have worked very closely with, and the one thing that they will tell you is, that was the best professional development I've ever gone through. I'm not going to speak for them, but there have been several that have told me that, that they feel more comfortable now in their classrooms than they ever really have, especially with the new standards. It's difficult stuff. We're adding to the rigor in our classrooms, and we're doing it in a way that, coming on the back end of 20 years of the same standards over and over and over again, never of the same standards over and over and over again, never changing, never including the new material... I mean, it has been such a drastic change for some of these teachers, because if you think about it, they weren't even... Some of them were barely alive twenty years ago. And now they have to adjust their whole way of thinking about students, about how other curricula come into that. If you talk to our teachers now that are on those teams, they're very satisfied with what they have done. They feel good about it, they feel confident, and they feel confident about their teaching. And they're not doing the coaches' job. I promise you that. Our coaches are very, very busy. They work with teachers who are struggling. They work with teachers who need to understand how to analyze their data, how to meet the needs of the students moving forward. There's a plethora of things that the coaches do, and I promise you, none of this is overlap.
Mr. Santani?
Dr. LeBlanc, is this a recurring cost that will be in the budget next year? Or is this just a fiscal year nineteen cost, and this line will go to zero the following year?
So, I'll let Ms. Samick and Dr. Aguilar answer that. If that's okay.
So, Mrs. Santani, we do not envision this as recurring. It's an opportunity that presented itself, given the budget numbers.
You don't envision it as recurring, or it's not recurring? I'm sorry, I just...
I guess the point is...
Is it a one-year project?
It is a one-year project.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
However, if you're asking me if I would love to continue it as time goes on, absolutely. But as of now, it's just a one-year project.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments on this, Dr. Chassault?
What I'm hearing is that some science teachers won't get access to this money. And then... Still, it'll be open for everyone to learn from what other teachers have done. And... But it can't be assured to any of us that every teacher will engage in, "Oh, look, here's some learning opportunities. Let me go see what I can get from this." And then, when it comes to properly-aligned curriculums and these developmental projects, I mean, it's kind of... It feels like we're taking a shot in the dark here. It's like, let's see what the teachers can come up with, project-wise, to engage in learning, to help the students learn better, learn more, when it kind of sounds like, so this is what the coaches and the specialists should be doing. That's what it sounds like to me. So, I'm not looking for an answer to that. You're certainly welcome to respond. However, it just seems like, if we're going to come up with a curriculum, I would think that it would come from someone from the top, as opposed to the teachers. Otherwise, it makes me feel like we don't need the coaches or the specialist positions.
You want my comment? I would just say that... I think the way we're looking possibly at this project, I think we maybe have two different viewpoints. So, from my perspective, and what we're trying to accomplish here, is never to allow, or not to allow, but never to put the teachers in a situation where they are isolated from any of the expertise, right? Teachers that are in the trenches are the ones that know their students. They're the ones that understand what needs to be done to meet the needs of their students. And I say that because if you go to Ridge, it's one set of students with different needs than the ones at West Side, than the ones at Prairie, and so on. The idea is to create collaborative teams of teachers who will have open conversations about what needs to occur in their classrooms, never by themselves. This will... The original plan or idea, yes, but as they develop those units, I assure you, they will be aligned, they will be rigorous, because that is our job, my coaches and myself, to ensure that the rigor of the units for the students are what they should be and are appropriate, and grade-level appropriate. I'm good.
Mr. Delatchele?
I guess what she's trying to say is she's empowering her teachers. As a person in real life, in employment, I guess you could say I would be in the coaches' position. It would be foolish of me to not challenge those below me, not below me, those that work for me, to not come up with ideas that are a better way for us to do our job. Because just because I'm at the level I am, it doesn't make me the expert. The experts are in the trenches. So... By engaging these teachers more, they have more input into what they're teaching, they buy in more to what they're teaching. It's better for the students. This is just a win-win, in my opinion.
Mr. Delatchele?
You can't always... Yeah, the coaches can always tell the teachers what to do.
Right.
Sooner or later, you've got to listen to your people. It's called teach back.
Right.
And it works.
But when your folks tell you, "Hey, I got a really great idea. This route can be better run, as opposed to going down this busy highway. If we take this road..." They come up with the ideas. You don't have to, in turn, give them a hundred thousand dollars. And, I mean, it's your job to try and come up with the best techniques in curriculum and the way to get, "I need to engage this kid, and I don't need a five-thousand-dollar grant." And then you're going to decide whose idea was better, and then, so my idea was better, I got it. His didn't, and then Dawn doesn't necessarily go and engage and look at everything that I did. It isn't mandatory. It's open to them. I mean, the concept just doesn't make any sense to me.
Makes sense to me.
Any further comment on this item? The motion that the board zero out line item number sixty, elementary science curriculum and development. Last call. Madam Secretary, call for the vote. Has everybody voted?
Four, four, three against.
Motion carries. If there are no other motions at this time, Mr. Guidry, I'll ask you to continue with Row Reference Number Seventy. Cost center supervisors, additional increases? Don't want this closed?
Close the ability to keep much into ALIO. If you recall, we had a deadline date for that. Any changes after that, we're running through this section. This is an example of that. We asked our cost center supervisors to revisit their cost centers, and we identified an additional half a million dollars over and above the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that had already been offered up in reductions through the cost centers. When we start going through the cost centers, you'll see that some total of the reductions there is right at three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for a sum total of eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, the reductions to our cost centers. The next line item is an increase to cost center eleven-oh-six. All of these came about after the cutoff for entering items into ALIO budget module. Superintendent search, an increase of fifteen thousand dollars to restore it to its full amount. When we're going through the process, initially, we thought our MFP revenues were going down, so we were looking for cuts. So, we came back, once we realized that it's actually an increase, and restored that fifteen thousand. Row Reference Seventy-two, an increase to cost center eleven-nineteen, public relations relating to an additional increase to advertising, more specifically, sides and associates that are helping us or assisting us with some of our initiatives. One of our more recent ones is our newsletter that just recently, the first edition, was shared with our staff. And has it been distributed in the community as well, Dr. Aguilar? Yes. Next line item, seventy-three, Magnet Academy Showcase, ten thousand dollars. In essence, we're restoring a cut that had been made in the previous year, where last year, we basically tried promoting the... We're getting the word out on our academies at each individual site. We're proposing that we go back to having it in a more centralized location, so we can... We feel we can be more effective in presenting the different programs that our academies, that our schools have to offer. Row Reference Seventy-four, pupil appraisal team adjusts towards required staffing. We have a state bulletin that requires a certain number of pupil appraisal personnel based on the number of students that we have in our school district. We spent last year, this year, we may have one more year left. We're trying to add one team each year to get us to that point where we will be staffed at the staffing ratio included in that bulletin. This represents one additional team being added, additional cost of a hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars. Row Reference Seventy-five, general fund portion of transformation zone reorganization. This is an increase of six-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. That's to be viewed or considered at the same time as Row Reference Seventy-six, which is the next line item, where we reallocate some of existing general fund positions to this reorganization, which in effect is an offset to the positions that are being added for a net increase of a hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty dollars. If you look at Footnotes sixteen and seventeen, if... Can you get to that from here? It shows the detail of the positions that are being proposed, is being added. Now, this is... This would take place whether or not we're successful in obtaining the redesign grant. Transformation Zone Officer, Transformation Zone Director, Administrator Office Coordinator, and four master teachers. It's what makes up the slots that have an additional cost of six-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. We would reallocate existing positions totaling five-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand for that net increase of a hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty dollars, representing the general fund share of this transformation zone reorganization. Row Seventy-seven, additional of one pre-case section at Myrtle Place Elementary. This is the teacher and para and startup cost, total of estimated total of a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand to be considered or reviewed, along with Row Reference Seventy-eight, decrease in fuel and transportation, which is being proposed as an offset. The final line item in this section is Row Reference Seventy-nine, traffic control in this at Ridge Elementary, twenty-one thousand dollars. This is to address the traffic situation at that particular school.
I'm just curious, what are y'all doing at that particular school? Because the traffic situation is not limited to that. I'd be interested to hear solutions that are being tried out at different schools. Does anybody tell me what's going on?
I think Ms. Bernard might be...
What they have out there, you got a state highway, you got Golden Grain and Field Span, and you've got people trying to make a left onto Golden Grain. You got people trying to make a left going south on Field Span. And you're basically paying a police officer or deputy to control traffic at that intersection right in front of Ridge. Okay. So, that's not... Are people, like, stopping on? On the side of the road, yes, sir.
All right. Yeah. I've seen some of that. I want the people at Broadmoor and Plantation to stop parking in one of the lanes on Chameleon in Broadmoor and blocking everybody. My understanding, the school buses can't even get to the schools in the morning. They've got so many cars around there. I was just curious what people are doing.
Yeah. I also want parents at Alice Boucher to stop dropping their kids off in the middle of the street, because apparently that's against the law.
Would you change that to traffic director if you... Because there's two different ones.
They're about causing major accidents on Field Span. What's that? It's... We've almost had, I don't know how many wrecks in the last few weeks of... Part of it's a state highway, the other part's a parish road, because of the way South Field Span goes into Golden Grain. You've got cars parked up and down. I think we've got more car riders at Ridge than we've got bus riders at Ridge. Yeah. It's becoming beyond a safety issue, and we've got to do something before somebody gets killed.
So, it comes out of Mona's cost center. Where is Mona?
This is for the...
So, it's a traffic cop, is it two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, to try to control traffic?
Dr. Chassault? I'll give my two cents. I think that this is a necessary line item. How... Yeah, absolutely. However, depending on what we do with school security and resource officers, that might be something that, you know, I know at Milton, the officer directs traffic. Right now, they don't have one. And I think this is definitely necessary, but I don't know if this is the chicken or the egg. Mr. Broussard?
I think it's absolutely necessary, but we're having problems more than just one school. You know, I've had several phone calls from some of the schools that I represent blocking traffic. I don't know if we can... If Mr. LeBlanc can come up with another idea, a better idea of getting students onto the cars, or why they're not riding the bus? Because we've got a line three or four miles long, and customers are calling me that they're blocking traffic. Maybe we can take another look at whatever. I know we spoke about doing one thing, but I think it's... I think it's, at most, the school is getting out of hand.
Mr. Broussard, I'd like to shed some light on that as well. I would recommend that you contact the local police chief that represents that area and, or the sheriff, whoever would be the jurisdiction, because I know that there were major problems in Youngsville and Milton, and I know Mr. Borlon's philosophy, which is, I guess, somewhat true, you build it and they will come, but the chief in Youngsville and the sheriff for the Milton area took a very active approach with these concerns, and they have, in conjunction with the school system, doing some modifications to the property. The sheriff and the chief in Youngsville have really come up with good ideas to help fix some of the traffic problems. So I would start there if I were you. This is a little dip, well, appears to be a little different, state highway, very, it's just a problematic, you know, corner, and that's why I said it was necessary. It's definitely necessary at all schools, and Captain Drexel's the same, same way. It's just a low-traveled road, so, you know, they can manage it a little better.
We are attempting to solve the problem at one of the schools, and I guess by next year, that would be solved, but one of the other ones, we are landlocked as far as what we can do. We moved from one place to another, and it didn't solve the problem, it extended the problem, and I don't want to call the police officer and start writing citations because then we would be the bullet of woods, so.
Okay, Mr. Guidry.
Okay, that concludes review of that particular section. Next, section four is that of the cost centers, and they're listed in sequential order. So agenda item 2.4 are the general fund cost centers for the 1100 series, and the attachments to this particular agenda item provides the account-by-account detail of each of these cost centers. It reflects a column for transfers, if they're transferring from one line item to another, proposed increases, proposed decreases, and arriving at the proposed 1819 budget. So with that said, I would ask if there are any questions with regards to the 1100 series
Ms. Morris.
I do have a couple of questions, and I hope I can read my notes. Said $35,000 for the millage, I can't read the rest of my writing, but something about the millage, $35,000, so just curious what that was for.
It's an amount that we keep in the event that we, that we have either a millage renewal or potential millage election or share in any, any election expense.
Okay. And then 1119, I'm sorry, I have to go to it because I really can't read my handwriting. At the bottom, there's management, hang on. There's an increase of $45,000.
Yes.
Or something, what was that? Oh, for sides and associate?
Yes, that's some of the assistance, I'm sorry, let me, let you ask the question, your question.
I just, I don't, I was just wondering what the $45,000 was, and I guess what the contracted services, is that sides and associates?
Yes, ma'am. When ALIO was up and available for making notations, we added $45,000. We learned later that the correct amount should have been $60,000. So in the previous section we just discussed, we added the $15,000 more.
Okay. So this is, the $60,000 is the annual payment or contract for sides and associates to help us with advertising?
It's a number, a number of things, including the newsletter, including some advertising for EJ SAM and the virtual learning program, things like that.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for 1100.
Okay, agenda item 2.5, general fund cost centers, full budget for the 1200 series. Ask if there are any questions with regards to the 1200 series of cost centers.
Any questions?
No questions? Okay. Okay, agenda item 2.6, general fund cost centers, proposed budgets for the 1300 series cost centers. Any questions for any of these?
Mr. Guidry?
2.7, general fund cost centers, proposed budgets for the 1400 series cost centers. Any questions with regards to this series?
The Northside Health Academy cost center. What's happened with the money?
It is basically, it nets into the overall net decrease to expenditures of the $350,000. So it just goes towards offsetting other increases, some of them within the 1400 series.
Okay. Is that $500,000? $500,000 cost center decreases?
So we accounted for using it already, basically?
So it shows a budget still of $20,000, $23,000, but that $23,000 is not actually still budgeted for the Northside Health Academy, it's just showing on the 1400 line item?
On the, on the general fund budget summary, it's 14, what's that? When you go to that particular cost center, that $22,290 is zero, is zeroed out. We can, we can call it up on the general fund budget summary if you give us a minute, but the end result is that cost center, cost center is in fact zeroed out.
Any additional questions? Mr. Guidry?
Agenda item 2.8, general fund cost centers, proposed budget for the 1500 series. Any questions for the 1500 series? Okay, that, that takes us through the general fund budget summary. The next line item is, agenda item is 2.9.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
Before we get off of finance and dispose of all of these items, I've got a question. What is the dollar amount on a secretarial position, all-in, salary benefits, all-in, the average in the district?
If you give me a minute, I will call that up. And as Kayla may have it right off, 435, that's the secretary one, 435.
It's all-in? Okay. Hand this to Mary, Dawn. I, I want to make a, I'm not going to make a recommendation, I'll make a motion since, you know, I don't know how recommendations are working these days, so I'd like to make a motion that we add a secretarial position to the budget that would be specifically dedicated to answering phone calls in the transportation department only.
So would you motion say again?
To add a position to the budget.
Yeah.
A secretarial position.
A clerk could do that.
Whatever they want to call it.
Mr. Hidalgo, it could probably be done by a clerk instead of the secretary one.
That'll be fine. I just want to make sure that we have enough to get the job done, whatever that requires.
You want two clerks to do that?
We're going to get one.
Mr. Hidalgo, two clerks, I mean, one person to answer all of the phone calls is probably not going to solve the problem.
Well, right now, we have .5, .75. So what do we need, let me ask this, if I could, what do we need to get the job done? Still getting calls regularly about, you know, no one answering calls, no one returning calls?
Hang on just a second. A clerk would be what? So more than likely, if you're asking for assistance with transportation and responding to phone calls, obviously, two clerks would probably put us in pretty good shape.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say two clerks for the sake of this motion for discussion.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay. Can I have the floor, since you're the president right now, chairman? So my, can I, okay, not just yet. Also, Dr. Taggallard, or, you know, HR, whoever would be responsible, I would like to make sure that the proper training is accounted for financially for these two clerks providing this passes, and also make sure that the job description is very extremely specific, that the job of these two persons are going to be to answer phone calls related to transportation, transportation only, not driving buses, not checking cameras, and not doing anything else in between. Oh, yeah, well, of course, if they're answering calls and responding to phone calls that they can't answer, that would, that would be a good thing as well. And I'll save my other comments for later.
So many of you know, I don't think, I don't think the public really knows, but many of you know that I spent about a month, every morning when I got to work, I would call the transportation office, and every afternoon at 2:00, I would call the transportation office. And I would call the number on the website, 521-RIDE, and I would leave a message saying, this is Justin Centani, school board member for District 6, I have a question about transportation, will you please return my phone call? And I never did get a phone call, never did get an answer or anything like that. So I tell that story to say, we are spending 100, hold on, I had the $103,188.11 on clerks in transportation right now, and not a one phone call is being answered. I know, I'm getting, I'm getting these calls the same as you do. So what convinced me that two more are going to answer phones?
Well, well, I can't tell you why those there are not answering phones now, but I can assume why. And I'd also, in line with what you just said, or in response to what you just said about your phone calls, I'd also like to ask staff to check all of our, all of our outlets, all of our media outlets, to make sure that the phone numbers that we're putting out in the public for folks to call are working, accurate phone numbers, and point everything to one phone bank to make sure that those calls are getting put there properly. I can't answer that, I think everybody's running around.
And Mr. Centani, it is true that Justin did call repeatedly, and the problem was traced to an issue with the phone line. And once that was resolved, we have dramatically improved the ability to respond to phone calls. It was a problem that we all suffered through at the beginning of the year because the staff was answering tons of calls. However, some of the calls went into a queue that never recovered. So it was a phone line problem that's been resolved. The two additional people will be dedicated 100% of their time to answering the phone, along with the other clerks, so that we don't have an issue. And incidentally, we're going to try not to change bus routes and bus stops so that people know where to go to catch the bus and what bus to get on. Hopefully, we'll have a much better start in August.
So, Mrs. Centani, Mrs. Centani, I think that's part of your question, is that these would be dedicated, but I think another part, another, you know, potential part is that at the beginning of the school year, with changing of routes or not, no changing of routes, it's, you know, it's a very intense department. I mean, so I think that.
This was November, by the way.
No, 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 I, so my motion tonight is because despite the fact that we've dramatically increased production in that department along the lines of answering phone calls, I still regularly get text messages, Facebook messages, emails, et cetera, and this is my attempt to help fix that problem from the phone call. And I'm just one district, so I have no doubt it's happening everywhere, and this is my attempt to help fix the problem.
To maybe help Mrs. Centani out, how many clerks do we have in transportation now, and what are they doing? What are their job, so we got three, so what's their job descriptions?
You have, you have one who's handling routing.
Okay.
You have a second one who's handling all field trips, billing of field trips, managing that aspect. You have a third one who, main responsibility is assignment and management of subs, and of those three, and we had a fourth one that's currently vacant, of those three mentioned, two of them have been driving probably four hours a day. So that's part of the issue. So by, by specifically allocating them to answering phone calls, you'll have more time allocated for that purpose. When half of your day is spent on a bus, and nothing wrong with that, that's what it's taking to get the job done, that leaves you a little short on, because they have other responsibilities in addition to, you know, the main ones that I mentioned. Those are the more critical ones that they handle, but they do handle others as well.
Okay, so you said there's three filled and one's empty. So you only need one. If one's empty, why don't you fill the one that's empty?
Unless we're going to change the job description to make sure that that one that's not filled is going to be dedicated solely to answering phones, my motion is for two.
Well, then change the job description.
I forget that you're, you're in charge right now, I apologize, Madam President.
Do we have a funding source for this? Or are you just saying, out of the $450,000 we cut earlier, let's say it's $60,000 worth of people to answer phones in transportation? It's one way to look at it. May I offer a substitute motion?
Sure.
Okay. I'll offer a substitute motion to zero the transportation digital downloads line item of $90,000 and replace with Mr. Hidalgo's two clerks dedicated to answering phones.
That defeats the purpose?
What you mean defeats the purpose? Now, you're going to need two more people to check cameras all day.
We got two people that are driving around all over the place.
Zero line item number, I lost it again, line item number 66 from the prior document. I believe what Mr., I believe what Dr. Chasson is trying to tell you is that.
I'll have to ask you.
It's your motion. I'm, I'm offering you a place to pay for it, that's all. Because I'm going to vote against the other one.
That's fine, I was going to allow the superintendent to figure that out.
Okay.
As customary.
So, Justin, you got a second?
I'll say.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion and a second by Mr. Lashley.
Frankly, I might vote against this one too, I just wanted to have something on here.
My question is, currently, with the current staff we have now, can we reorganize where we could appoint someone to answer the phone and have like a backup when that person is out, or there's no way we can do it with the staff we have currently?
We're just so tight on staff, so, so one lady, she does, she answers them as fast as they come in. The routing specialist typically does not drive.
The routing specialist typically does not drive a bus. They, they are covering the, every day, a bus driver calls in sick. So, we've gotten much better covering routes. But she's covering routes. Then you've got the secretary that's working with substitutes. And you got the lady working with transportation. You got a secretary that's kinda working with the administrative issues. We really are, we're just, they're stretched thin, and three of them drive every day for four hours. So, you really kinda just get them from 9:00 to 1:00, 9:00 to 2:00, where they're trying, kinda like Mr. Guidry said, trying to cover their other tasks. And it's gotten better, like Mr. Hidalgo says, it still needs to be improved. But they're just, there's only so many hours a day that they're available at a phone. They're, it's better, but it needs to be improved.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Craig, is it true that all of the staff in the Transportation Department also have to have a CDL license? Or a license?
There was, there was board action years before, before we got here. That is the case. I don't know if everybody has an active CDL right now.
Okay, so, that's one of the ways to address this issue, is to make sure the new job description does not require a CDL, because then they cannot be pulled to drive buses, and they can stay focused, because that is part of the issue. And the concern is, one, you may be able to find somebody faster if you don't need someone that already has a CDL or is in the process of getting it. And two, even if everybody in the world wants them to go drive a bus, they just can't do it. They have to stay put.
They're not legally, yep.
Any other comments on the substitute motion?
So, we'll have two people answering the phone every day? Is that what we're asking for?
Based on Mr., on the three, you'd have three. We'd set, you'd have call sta-, three call stations.
Okay, so, at all times, there should be someone answering the phone, at all times, eight hours a day?
Yes, yeah, we...
You tell them to expect me to start calling.
Dr. Chassault?
Yeah, we, it's just me, but we won't have as many calls as we did anymore, correct? As far as, obviously, at the beginning of the school year, during the summer, whenever it's leading up. But if we don't have the major change in overall that we had, we won't have as many phone calls, correct?
You're correct. Let's, I don't want to use the word "hope." Let's anticipate that we are not making dramatic changes to transportation. And so, we should have fewer calls. However, it's fair to presume that every, at every August, we have quite a bit of activity in the Transportation Department. We routinely have a call center that opens up for the first couple of weeks, just to make sure every kid knows what bus they've been assigned to and the bus stop.
Who staffs the call center?
Transportation contacts the temporary service, temp service.
Okay, so, Ms. Dorothy, can you put the temporary, or the substitute motion up, just so we can see it? Where? Mr. Bruce Orne? Where is?
Even though we employ two, two additional clerks, it's still, the phone calls are still channeled back to Mr. Evans. So, they are not capable of answering every call, of answering the questions from the caller. So, this still comes back to the person in charge. They need somebody answering, somebody answering the phone. But that, that person is going to say, tell Mr. Evans to call so-and-so back. I mean, why you need two person to answer the phone?
We just need somebody to answer the phone, Mr. Bruce Orne.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with him, I'm just...
Not me. I can't, I can't answer the transportation questions, and they get, many get funneled to me.
I, I, well, I guess because of, I don't have that many problems that they all do, because I'm centralized, you know? We get, they go closer, they go to school closer to their, to their home.
Mr. Guidry?
What you can, what you have is, and we do have a software where they manage or enter the, the, the phone messages. But not all, not all those phone messages have to be routed to Mr. Evans. A decision can be made to route it to the coordinator, to the routing specialist. We have Ms. Vicky Jacquet. Just depending on the nature of the call, it can be directed to anywhere from three to four other people, other than Mr. Evans. So, taking that call is, is a big help. And then, it can be, it can be redirected, or directed, so that it gets to any one of four to five people, depending on the nature of the call.
My comment was that the person answering that phone cannot answer the question of the caller. That caller has to be directed someplace else. That's, that was my comment.
Yes, sir.
So, this is really a customer service issue, and there are very large companies who deal with customer service. And it may mean that you call in with a question, and the person who answers your call can't answer immediately. But they're pleasant, they're polite. They say, "We'll get back with you within an hour," and they actually do. So, even routing it to other people doesn't work if they route it to any of those individuals you just named, and then they don't return the call. So, we have to have a good, strong customer service policy and practice in place to make sure that our customers, our parents, our constituents, our community are being, their issues are being addressed pleasantly, professionally, and timely. And I think that's the part that we're missing. So, we need to develop something to make sure that's getting done. And, you know, it may require some outside resources, and by outside, I mean outside of the Transportation Department, because they're obviously busy. They're not gonna have time to come up with some type of customer service program, but that's what we need. So, I just have a question, I guess, for clarification. So, the substitute motion is to zero out the 66 line item. Okay. And then, so, we're gonna have the two additional clerical, and then we still have the empty clerical position. Is that right? Well, somebody said something about three clerks, so that's...
And it's not really a vacant position. What happened was that position became vacant in the first semester. We weren't able to find a qualified applicant until the second semester. It was after February 1st. Typically, we don't start a new contract on them, because you're just paying them off of it. So, there's somebody occupying that position, and in the fall, he's actually doing a great job. We'll appoint him permanently. So, there's really no vacancies, just occupying it as a substitute.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments on this motion? Then, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
One, four, six against.
All right, the substitute motion failed. Mr. Hidalgo? The original motion, and can we?
Can we pull that up?
Can we see the original motion again, Ms. Dorothy?
Madam President, Chairman, Chairwoman, I think that this, clearly, I brought it up. So, I think this is a very important thing. You know, you stated customer service. I guess I couldn't say it, couldn't have said it better myself. We, we have to try to answer these calls and get answers to these folks. I understand we had a rough year this year. But again, I'll repeat it again. I'm still getting the messages and the calls. And this is not to point a finger, this is to address the problem and put something dedicated in there. So, if someone feels that two is too many, one is better than none, guys. I'd like to see this acted on. So, I'll ask my fellow board members, see if they support this motion or come up with a better compromise.
All right, any additional comments on the original motion? And I'll call for the vote.
Six, four, one against.
All right, motion passes, and I'm handing the gavel back to our Vice President.
All right, Mr. Guidry, sorry about that. You can carry on.
I think the next things are motions that we have to make.
Yeah. Item 2.9, Transformation Zone Organization. Is that gonna be Dr. Aguilar? Who's leading that conversation? Dr. Aguilar?
I can make the motion, that the board authorize the board action, that the board authorize the board action taken on April 11th to create the Transformation Zone and eliminate the School Improvement Administrator and the Academic Auditor positions become effective on July 1st, 2018.
Second?
We have a motion by Ms. Morris, and a second by Mrs. Morrisson. We have any public comment on this motion? Item 2.9. Board member comment, or Dr. Aguilar, did you have a comment? Board member comment?
Questions, concerns?
Madam Secretary, I'd like to call for the vote. Has everybody voted?
Yes.
Make the next motion.
Okay. I'll read it, and then you can just take it on.
Seven, four, none against.
Motion carries. Item 210, Human Resources Transformation Zone Clerical Position.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the clerical position in the Transformation Zone and be classified as an Administrative Office Coordinator.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Morris, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Any public comment? Board member comment? Madam Secretary, call for the vote. Votes are up?
Uh, do you know where he went? Mark him absent.
Gotta roll.
Yeah. Do eleven.
I can do eleven.
Six, four, none against.
Motion carries. Item 211, Staff Allotment Guidelines and Formulas Booklet, 2018-19.
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation that the board approve the Board Allotment Guidelines and Formulas Booklet for the 2018-2019 school year.
That's a motion by Ms. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Lachey. Any public comment?
Great.
Board member comment? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Seven, four, none against.
Motion carries. Item 212, Delete Policy File KKA, Membership in the School Board Association.
Mr. President, I move that the board delete policy file KKA.
Second? We have a motion by Mr. Centani, and a second by Mrs. Morrison. We have any public comment on this item? Has any board member comment on this item? Mr. Centani?
Let's make a quick comment that the, the policy file, which I believe to be bad policy. I'm not saying membership in the School Board Association is bad, or that it's not worthwhile. And I don't believe deleting this policy file will withdraw us as members from the LSBA. But the policy file definitely reads, "The Lafayette Parish School Board shall maintain membership in the Louisiana School Board Association. Authorization to include the required organizational dues in the annual budget shall be considered automatic from year to year." To my knowledge, this is outside of mandatory state expenses that we incur. The only item that we, that falls into this classification that we have control over. If we want to have it in the budget, let's vote to have it in the budget. Let's put it in the budget. Let's not just have this policy that stands in our way if anybody ever changes their minds, or we find a better thing to spend that money on, or something else. So, I hope you can support this.
I'd like to add, Mr. Centani, that I agree it's bad policy. And if we have any other policies on the books that we can find, that mandate that we hold membership or association with any organizations, that, it just, it just seems kinda bad. Again, it's not to, to, to remove us from that organization, but it's to remove, and look, this could be done, I guess, anytime, but this is simply bad policy. Any, any other comment, board member comments? Hearing none, I'd like to call for the vote.
Seven, four, none against.
Motion carries. We have a request by a board member, and I am of the opinion that since the agenda item 2.3 was not a closed-ended item, and it allowed for several motions, that this would be in order. Dr. Chassault? I don't know what it is yet, I don't, but...
Yeah, it's, it's budgetary. Per the request of the superintendent, they wanted me to make a motion as far as board direction. I'm not gonna tell them how to fund it or where to fund it. But as opposed to picking one item versus another, just ask them if they can go and possibly search out possible money to fund. I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to fund the executive master teacher out of the general fund.
We have a motion by Dr. Chassault, seconded by Ms. Morris, to fund, repeat your motion?
The executive master teacher out of the general fund.
To fund the executive master teacher out of the general fund.
And really quickly, and the reasoning is, the executive master teacher is a position for the Transition Zone, and there's a grant that we are hopefully going to be awarded a whole lot of money. On the off chance that the grant doesn't cover it, we still need this position. And if the grant does possibly cover said funding, then we'll be able to transition properly.
Any public comment? Board member comment? Mr. Centani?
Calls? Dr. Chassault, calls?
It was listed on the chart from the Wednesday meeting, when we were looking.
I did not, I did not memorize that chart.
I didn't either, but that's where it would be.
$85,000? Thank you.
Eighty-two, three, none.
I believe it's required under the School Board's ESA plan. So, even if the grant, if we get nothing from the grant, it's required under the state-approved ESA plan, so...
Hearing none, I'd like to call for the vote. Voting is open. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to fund two more master teachers for the schools that were left out being Karen Crowe and Northside.
Motion by Dr. Chasson, a second by Ms. Morris, to fund two more master teachers for Karen Crowe.
Karen Crowe High.
Karen Crowe High School and Northside High School.
Northside High School, the two schools that were left out.
So Dr. Chasson, it's total of four teachers?
Three.
Or two, one each for each school, or two for each school?
One for each school.
So total of two.
Total of two. Oh, if y'all were given four, I mean, oh, okay.
Mr. Lachale?
What does a master teacher do?
That's a really good question.
You know?
We need the master teachers. There are, there are eight master teachers that are going to, there were instructional coaches, Ms. Samick, that have now transitioned into master teacher positions.
The master teacher will be a 202 position, will be equivalent to an instructional coach. I, I just want to be clear, you weren't asking for two for Karen Crowe, one ELA, one math, and two for Northside?
Oh, that's what y'all are giving right now?
I'm not giving anything. I, I thought, I thought in previous.
Dr. Chasson, I think that's the correct configuration. You asked for the Cadillac model. I think it's two and two.
It should be.
It should be? Okay, I like, I like it should be.
Dr. Chasson, you want to?
Yes, I like the it should be version.
That the board approve?
Two master teachers for Northside and two master teachers for Karen Crowe.
Yes.
Dr. Chasson, just, did you want that paid out of the general fund?
Yes, sir.
We have any other board member comment on this item?
Our staff or the public? Last call. Hearing none, when the motion's ready, I'd like to call for the vote. Oh, the votes up. Board members, fellow board member.
I guess it's right.
Still on his wish list. Voting's atmosphere. I'm sorry, babe, I'm sorry. Yeah. I ain't trying to rush you.
Motion carries. Dr. Chasson?
I'd like to make a motion that we hire a truancy officer strictly dedicated to the transition zone.
We have a motion by Dr. Chasson, a second by Ms. Morris, to hire a truancy officer specifically dedicated to the transition zone.
I'm sorry, transformation zone.
I keep interchanging the two.
We're in a lot of transition tonight.
Absolutely.
In our district, we call them community liaisons. So I just wanted to make sure in the wording of the, that y'all call it a community liaison. Dr. Aguilar has the job description right there, if you'd like to comment.
So let me just let the board know that we currently have four of these individuals in the district and we believe that without adding an additional burden to the general fund, we can deploy one of those individuals full-time in the transformation zone. So there would not be a need to hire a fifth individual, if you so choose. Otherwise, it's a $73,000 expenditure.
Dr. Chasson, would you consider?
Well, here, here's my thing when it comes to that. There are, there were individuals that were dedicated to picking up the phones in the Transportation Department, but if I have to make a choice between two clerks answering the phones to.
Dr. Chasson, that was just, just some information for you.
I completely understand, but, but with that being said, if, if there's a notion or an option between the two, I have kids that do not come to school. So if we could have dedicated this person far ahead of time, like we have serious absentee issues when it comes to these schools, and I would never say anything bad about Coach's office because they do an amazing job, but I need a whole person specifically dedicated because I can't teach them if they're not in class. And some of them live in hotels, some of them live with grandma, they live with auntie, parent, surrogate mother, their uncles on their dad's side, and we can't get them to school. So I need a truancy officer specifically dedicated to make sure, to hold parents accountable, grandmas and aunties, and I need them, I need, I need them in-class learning 100% of the time. So that, that's my request.
Dr. Chasson, you may or may not want to change your motion, but you may suggest just to dedicate one of the existing four to your, to that zone and, and that would definitely.
I, I can, I can grasp that concept, but, but I'mma look at, I don't even have to look at Coach because I'm sure he's gonna, he's gonna, he's probably gritting his teeth. If I take one of those people specifically dedicated, excuse me, if I take one of those people and specifically dedicate them to the transition zone, will that not leave the three other folks with the other schools incredibly burdened?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this item? And the cost is 79.5. Any additional comments on this item? The item is that, can we get the item up on the screen?
In just a second.
The motion is that the board hire a community liaison dedicated to the transformation zone. Any additional comments? Hearing none, I'd like to call for the vote.
Seven, four, none against.
Motion carries. With that said, I want to thank you all for hanging out with us tonight and this meeting is adjourned.